Here.
Nate.
Here.
Stephanie.
Here.
John.
Here.
Doug.
Here.
Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, consent agenda, any additions or corrections or adding to it or anything?
Nope.
Okay.
I'll move to approve.
We have motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Travis?
Aye.
Nate?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
This is a time of, anybody can speak to the council if they're not on the agenda now. Okay, moving on. Annual TIP report from Spear Financial.
That was quick, thank you, mayor. Larry from Spear Financial, and if you were in the room, I brought with me John Murphy from our Waterloo office. John joined us in January, and he's been very successful with us. And my daughter Maggie is at a lesser assignment. We want to bring up the number one squad here for this one.
You betcha.
Well, tell her you said that.
And also, if you are at the LEC, make sure you stop by our booth. We just told you to get an award, so congratulations. We will be there at the banquet, here you will sit. What we did was, we handed out your update, your annual update to the TIP report. And with your permission, just very quickly, I will remind you how to read it and go through the pages. So if you want to turn to the red section, and you should have a book like this that you put it in. You want to take out the old pages, because now those are obsolete after tonight, and put in the new pages. If you do not have a book, make sure you let us know, and we will provide you with a new one. So, with the red pages, this summarizes all your general obligation bonds. As you can see, we start on the left with the 2005, 2011B, 2015, and 2018. We're kind of backwards here, because later you are going to approve, or we have on the agenda to approve your loan agreement for $160,000. We did go ahead and put that in the report, assuming that you will approve that. Then, if you'll notice, in the center of the red pages is the total principal. And if you notice at the bottom, your total principal outstanding is $1,00877. Again, that's with the 160 that we've included. We have principal and interest next to it. And then the yellow column, I'll show you where we get those numbers. You are buying down some of your general obligation bonds with TIP revenue, sewer revenue, and water revenue. The right-hand column, and we've drawn an arrow to 2020, that is the amount of money after you have deducted those transfers in, that you should levy. The minimum you should levy for debt service for next year, next March, would be $113,935. Any questions? The next page is kind of a golden cage, and this is, really doesn't have to do with your outstanding debt. What we do is, we summarize your revenue debt. And as you can see, you have an SRF 2004, 2009, and 2018. The 2009, I just want to point this out, is at 3%. You have a call, we have a very fine line under the 2019 principal payment. Once that hits the call, then the SRF should notify you, if indeed the interest rates are still at 175 and a quarter of a percent administration, they should drop that to 2% automatically. If not, let us know, and we will call them and have them make that investment. Because everything else is at 2%. And if you notice, the 2004 was, it's always a 10-year call, 2004 and '14 dropped to 2% because that would have been higher. And so we want to make sure that you drop that to 2%. So the total principal, and again, these are all for water and sewer projects. So you buy this down with sewer revenue and water revenue, and then the right-hand column, you levy no taxes for your revenue debt. Questions? Purple section, this is, you have one rebate, the Brothers Market. And if you'll notice, under the title, we have annual appropriation. Very important, annual appropriations that is in there and in the agreement. Because of the fact that if it is not, then the entire amount of the future rebate will count against your debt capacity. And we'll show you that in just a minute on another chart. So annual appropriation, and I think it's on the agenda tonight, I noticed, where you have to approve the annually, just their payment back. And so, it's a court ruling that if indeed you don't have that, then the entire amount. So if you have a total of $500,000 in rebates coming through in the future, if you don't have annual appropriation, that 500 comes against your debt capacity. If you do, then it's just the annual payment up to that 500,000. Very important. So as you can see, you're at almost $27,000 a year, and this ends in 2024. Next section, this is where we get the yellow section on the red section. So, out of the general obligation bond, you pay down, you transfer in TIP dollars from the downtown TIP district, 2011B, that's the GO issue that you issued, and the 2000 TIP in '15. And so, in the middle of this column, it says "Transfer to General Obligation." That's where I get the yellow column in the red report. Because you're transferring this in, this is the amount of money you have obligated from each, or from the downtown district, to transfer to the general obligation. And then the next column is the "Transfer to the Brothers Market for the Rebate," the purple section we just talked about. And so, or I'm sorry, it's to transfer to the, it's a forgivable loan, that next column. And then the purple column is your rebate that you have for the Brothers Market. So every year you levy TIP taxes come December 1, and in, so it's in your next year's budget. And this is what happens to your TIP dollars. Then the right-hand column on this chart is how much you will levy December 1, or before, for next year's budget, and that is a minimum of $121,178.50. And this is where your TIP dollars come in, to buy down your general obligation, to buy down your forgivable loan, and also to give a rebate back to the Brothers Market. Questions? Will you remind me how this is going? So, now we have your debt capacity. This is why annual appropriation is very important, because you want to protect your debt capacity. So I'm going to read down, we're giving you last year's, and then I'm going to read down column 2. So debt capacity is in the Constitution, and it's 5% of your 100% value. And so it's your constitutional debt limit. And so your 100% value in the city is $154,657.62. 5% of that is $7,732,000, that's your debt capacity. It's all the money you can ever borrow, until you pay it off, or until your valuation goes up. Then you have outstanding bonds of $1,717,000. That was from the red section, remember the principal column that I read? And then we have a rebate agreement annually appropriated of $26,982. You're paying off in this current year, in principle only, of your debt, $186,000. You are rebating back $26,982. We count it, we take it away, because you're paying it back. You will pay it back to the Brothers Market. And then, tonight, we will issue $160,000 in your bonds, later on on your agenda. And so your remaining debt capacity out of the $7,770 is $6,404,100, or 78.13%. Very high debt capacity. When we first did the report, you asked us just to show you what 20% would be if you held that out for emergencies. This doesn't have any meaning to your debt capacity, we're just showing you the 20%, and that is $1,546,000. So your remaining debt capacity at 80% is $4,495,030, or 58%. Now, this town grew at 9.52%. And so at the bottom of the page, we want to be conservative. We update this report annually, so next year it'll change. But we, if we're looking into the future, we just said, okay, if you grow at 2%, what does that mean for your debt capacity? So you read it down here, you start up in column 3, column 4, column 5, and keep reading down. And so this goes on for two pages. And you will notice that by 2028, or to the fiscal year of '30, it will be your last payment of all of your debt, unless you, if you more than.
Just wanted to clarify that the amount of debt capacity that we have available is a good thing.
It's a wonderful one. 78% is very high.
The only thing I want you to clarify today.
It's very, very high.
Oh, boy, we're always trying to figure out what we can buy.
Trying to figure out, I'm spending phenomenal. I worked very hard to get it where it's at.
We'll talk later.
And we're behind you there, we will. Okay, so, the blue sections, now we separate TIP areas, because they do have different timeframes that they run through and things like that. So first one is the downtown, the industrial, and the Novak. And so I'm reading in a downtown 2 again, and this is your 100% value in those areas. So 100% of the commercial property is $7,753,000. That now is rolled back to 90%. So that is $6,978,000. Your industrial property is $2,290,000, 90% rollback, $2,261,000. Personal and agricultural within the city is $182,000. Residential is $16,849,000, this is all in this TIP district. That is rolling back to 55.62%, or $9,371,000. Now we have that new category, multi-residential, that changed from commercial, now any, if you have commercial property on the bottom of a building, and you have apartments above it, that becomes multi-residential. It used to all be commercial, and not roll back. But now the state has changed that, and so that's $8,266,000. And next year, it rolls back to 78, or the current year we're in, 78.75%, or $6,510,000. Notice, under that 78, next year it rolls back 75, 71, 67, on the front page. And it keeps going down until it meets the residential rollback, which is 55.62. So somewhere they think that's all going to meet, and it's going to stop at that rollback. This is brand new, this is fairly new, the state law, it's called multi-residential. So your total taxable value in this TIP district is $25,104,000. You levy in this TIP district $29.10, $29.10 per thousand. And so you can produce in this district actually $730,733 in money, in dollars. Now, we just told you from all of these charts I gave you before, that your debt requirement is $81,599,000. The forgivable loan is $12,000,000. And the TIP rebate is $26,982,000. So that's your requirement out of the $730,733 that you have. So you are actually rolling back, okay, they ask you if you're using all your TIP funds, you are not. You are actually turning back $610,152,000 in the current fiscal year, or 83% is being turned back to be used by the city, the county, the school, community college, or their general operation. Questions? Oh, wait a minute. Okay, this goes on for two pages. And so you can see just in the future, it would be, and this did grow at 25%. Again, we rolled it back to 3%. We're not sure that that is sustainable, and every year when we update the report, you will update that percentage. The next is the Casey's TIP district. And as you can see, column 2 again, the total value of commercial is $484,000, 90% rollback, $436,000. No other value in that area, and we are taxing at $29.10,000. So it produces $12,692,000 in dollars. And basically, this expires in 2027, if you look up under the blank. And according to our report, you made your last payment on rebate last year at $11,000,000. So you're actually turning back all of your money from the Casey's development of $12,693,000, or 100% of the value. Now this continues, this expires in 2027, because there is an expiration on different TIP areas. And so if something happens in this area, that you need to do a rebate or something, then you got until 2027 in order to do that, before this district expires. Commercial districts are 20 years. Goes on for two pages. We don't need it to go on for two, so we put this. And then the Albert TIP district expires next, or this current fiscal year. So basically, all you have in here is the $4,344,000 in value. We roll that back, that's all housing. We roll that back to 55.62%, or $2,416,000 taxable value. $29.10,000 again in this district, so it produces $70,344,000. And basically, there is no requirement in this, so you are turning that back. But this district, according to our records, expires in the current fiscal year. With that, that's the report. We do have in here sections on the code sections 15A, 403, and 404, that went into your original report. There is no, there was no amendment in the state legislature on TIP, and so we did not update those. But if indeed there are amendments, then we will bring you new code sections to discuss the study of TIP. Any questions?
So we're giving back $610,000 in TIP money that we could use somewhere?
Yes, but you want to be careful. You want to use TIP as a tool, because of the fact that it does also hurt your general fund if you take it. So what you have to do is, first of all, you have to have an obligation for TIP. So you have to borrow money, you got to have a rebate, you got to have something. But if you draw that money out, then it does jeopardize, or it does hurt, your ability to levy general fund taxes, county's general fund, schools' taxes, and things like that. So this is value that you want to be careful, because it does take away value that you levy your operation, operating budget on. So what we show you is how much you're turning back, because many cities get criticized for taking all of the TIP dollars, currently counties and the schools and community college, where actually we're showing you that you are not doing that. Yes, sir.
And it can only be used in that district.
Correct.
And there are restrictions on what you can use it for.
And what it can be used for.
It can only be used in a TIP district.
Only in a certain TIP district you're drawing it out of.
And for certain projects.
Right.
Oh, that's the downtown, okay.
Good question.
And then the different TIP programs have different rules, depending on when they were implemented?
Yes, it's a 20-year from the first time you certified taxes to it. So you could set aside a TIP district now, and if it just lays dormant for a while and nothing happens, that really doesn't start the timeframe. And once the timeframe starts, it doesn't stop. You can't, like, the 2027 district, it, you, now that you don't use it, it still kicks on to 2027. You can't stop it and then start it over. So you want to be careful in developing new TIP districts and in developing new projects, that you are careful that you have a lot of value before, in that district, before you actually draw the taxes off, because that's when your timeframe starts.
And the original TIP district didn't have a sunset to start with.
Anything prior to 1995, it goes on forever.
And they haven't changed that yet.
And they haven't changed that yet. So it's a good thing to talk to your legislators about not changing that. Because again, if you don't use it, then no one loses money. It's when you use it for new developments or for rebate. But again, if you're using it, then obviously, you're using it for a purpose, that somebody is building something in that district and adding to the entire value, so that you can all collect general fund taxes, the city, the county, and the school eventually. I'm a strong believer in TIP, as a judge.
But not everybody is. Not everybody is in the legislature.
That is correct. If, I think if they understood it, then they would be more supportive of it. Good question, other questions?
Good job.
Okay, I will be back up for the resolution.
Okay.
Thank you.
Boy, we could have put those closer together for him.
What?
Because the resolution's all the way down.
All right, we're going to move it up too.
You want to do that?
Yes.
Okay, which one is it?
It was 6H.
Okay, we're going to move 6H up next, so that he can leave us. Resolution 67, 2018, authorizing the approving of a loan agreement providing for issuance of 160 general obligation corporate purpose funds, Series 2018, and providing for the levy of taxes to be paid the time, the same.
This is actually for the purchase of the fire truck and the dump truck if we do not get the debt.
Okay, we need a motion?
Move to approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
Are you approving it with Bridge?
Yeah.
Is that what you're doing?
Yeah, according to the resolution.
Okay.
Second?
Yeah.
Doug's second. Doug?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
Nate?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Okay. Now is this the one you want me to sign?
Yes, the one, but if you'd like a quick summary, we did, as we pointed out in our letter, had two bids from Bridges Community Bank, Mount Vernon, and then Hills Bank of Hills, Iowa. And actually, we were running this quite a bit higher, just because with that, with the smaller amount of 160, and with the banks and the Fed raising short-term interest rates. When we started this project, we weren't sure. And so we actually came in over a percent below at the 265, we were actually running it at a 366. The second page is just the summary of how the bids came in. And then the final page is your final debt service schedule. When I talk about the call provision in your TIP report, these are actually callable with a 30-day notice. So that, what that means is, if for some reason you have extra money, you can actually pay these off by giving the bank a 30-day notice that you're going to call them in. So these are, have an immediate call to them, which typically, we will see a call maybe four or five years down the road, where you can pay them off. As with this, we didn't anticipate an immediate call into the deal, so.
Any questions for?
Great, thank you.
Kind of you want to sign this for him?
Take them here.
Okay, moving on. Resolution 62.
5B.
Oh, we're going to go back up here, okay, good idea. Told you we'd have to.
Yeah, we need to go back to 5B.
She wants me down.
Approval of annual urban renewal report of fiscal year 18.
This is a report that's due annually, which pretty much describes what we do use our TIP funds for. So it would involve all the stuff that Larry just got done talking about with you guys.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and second. Travis?
Aye.
Nate?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
Approval of press box for softball diamond at Lisbon Park.
I did post a picture of the drawings from Gordon Lumber behind you guys. You're all welcome to take a look at it, and Bob Bunny is here tonight to talk to you about it.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
The Clark family, and members of Kara Clark, would like to build a press box for us. We would like to locate it behind our Litcher's Home Plate. With that, to put it there, it's like 10 by 20 feet. They'll elevate high enough that probably 17, 18 feet near, so that we can see the entire field. The one thing that would have to happen is that one evergreen tree at the very west end would have to be removed, so that we would have room for people to go next to events and lights to the third base side. Questions you have?
They want to fund the whole construction and everything, and signage dedicated to Kara Clark. Awesome.
And then what about maintenance?
Hopefully, it's going to be metal, there should be very, very little. The doors will be retractable doors up and down, so it's very low ventilated, whatever happens to it. So, you know, I'm going to ask them, the school maintains it, the city maintains it?
Once it is built, it would be a permanent fixture, it would become property of the city. So it would fall under our maintenance agreement with the school, so we would be responsible to maintain it with those funds that we get from them on a yearly basis. If, this would be just like anything else, once we go way above and beyond that money that we receive each year, then we would negotiate with the school for, to share in those expenses. But this would be a permanent fixture, so it would stay, even once their 10-year lease would be up with the city, that piece of property would stay with our part.
Has this design, I'm sorry?
No, go ahead.
I was just going to ask, has this design been run through P&amp;Z, or?
It has not.
Looked at for setbacks? Because the three and a half foot on the corner looks a little tiny.
It would have, they would have to submit a building permit.
Okay.
And it would go through all that. It would not go through P&amp;Z, but it would go through zoning and administration.
Okay.
But that would be adjustable?
Yeah, I'm sure it would be.
Whatever.
Yeah, but that would be once the building permit is submitted.
Okay.
And Lynn County would still be required to do inspections on it.
Bob, do Clarks understand that it's a, then becomes a fixture of the city?
Okay.
Plan to build it this year?
They basically talked about it before, but before the 10-year lease really came into bearing, then they wanted to go ahead and pursue that.
They want to have this up by next season?
Would like to do it this fall.
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
A motion and a second. Doug?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
Nate?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Okay. Approval of change order number one in the amount of $7,718 for sanitary sewer rehabilitation project. Let me see what the change order is, what's it for? Oh, here's Dave, he can tell us.
And there's Dave.
Yeah.
So as we've gone through and televised all the infrastructure that is included in the project, we have found a few things that were a little bit different than what the old televising had shown. And then there were also just some changes because of the way that they named it, they might have put it in backwards. So we take the pointer pair out and put it back in at a different location. It's a change to the project, so we documented the change order. There are a few of them that are like that. There's also a few that the city had gone through and done pointer pair. Was it last winter, Travis?
Mm-hmm.
So those were in the project, but they got done outside of the project, so they just combined. so they just come off by change order. Uh, so you'll see that we added 10 and took, or added 6 and took 10 off under the first item for the point repairs. That's what that's about, is just moving around in the project. Uh, there's a few that are new, a few that we just dropped off. There's also a sewer pipe and open cut adjustments. We're taking a fair amount of quantity off and adding some new stuff in just based on what we found as we televised.
So why would you take some off? What would be the reason for that?
Well, in, in the next item, for example, the manhole replacement, uh, there's a certain amount that's in the manhole replacement. And we were going to do a point repair, which point repair out, and we're gonna replace the manhole now that includes some pipe. There's also some areas where if we thought there was an issue, but then we're televising, and we get in there and we get a lot better picture, and we can see that it's not as bad as we thought. We can monitor it, so we don't have to do it.
All right.
So there's just some adjustments in there as we get current data that, uh, from televising, as we go through and review it. And that's why we do the pre-televising, and that contractor is responsible for it, because if we take somebody else's work or a compilation of multiple different versions of televising, it's sometimes difficult to determine exactly where that is, because if they don't have it in there correct, or if it's not a very good picture, you have to feel a little bit conservative, because we don't want to go the other way and have to add a full bunch in, have it in there, and then we can take it out. They think they can get through with it now, like. Um, there's a few manholes that we're adjusting, uh, that we have to grind down to get to grade. And, uh, they've also asked that, uh, they explain, that we extend the completion date by two days for additional work on the manholes. So when we do the adjustment, the major item in there is the, uh, the manhole that's going to be down here on Manhattan Jackson, uh, right on the edge of the street shape area. It's outside of where we would have to tear it into decorative concrete, but like, but it's in that intersection. About 15 feet deep.
Yeah, it's right there.
For a manhole, and we have a point repair scheduled outside there. But, um, looking at it, it's, the manhole's getting worse, and we're just gonna take that out, so we'll get it replaced with a point repair. So the, uh, the change order, um, Travis and Eric have gone through this quite a bit, as I was reviewing, televising, looking at things in the field. So we're recommending that we go ahead and do this change order to increase the contract amount by $7,718 to those items I've talked about.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Doug?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Stephanie?
Hi.
Nate?
Hi.
Travis?
Hi.
Approval of pay estimate 02 in the amount of 146,102.45 cents for sanitary sewer rehabilitation project.
This is for that same project, and this covers work to date. About this is cleaning and televising and some manhole replacements and point repairs.
Okay.
I'll move to approve it.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Travis?
Hi.
Nate?
Hi.
Stephanie?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Doug?
Hi.
Okay, approval of sign permit for, what is the name?
Bo Dillon.
Bo Dillon, okay. I know who you are. I just don't know your name. I don't even know my old kid's name sometime.
Well, his name's actually Doug.
Doug has submitted this, um, permit request before. You guys have talked about it. The, he has a frame for a sign that's existing on his property. Uh, we weren't sure where the property lines are. We weren't sure if it was on city prop or his property or on DOT property. Um, since that meeting, he has went to the DOT and provided documentation to me that the DOT does not have any issues with him putting a sign on that existing sign post. So I had him resubmit his building permit, and everything checked out except for the fact that the sign, um, that he, the sign, existing frame of the sign is 20 feet high, and our code only allows for 17 feet. So I could not sign off on the, the building permit without bringing it to you guys. So apparently, it was, it was there for years at 20 feet, and our code only says 17.
Doug, are you putting the sign inside the frame or on top of it?
Yeah.
So it would be 27 feet high?
No, no, no. The, from the top of the post where it's at right now.
Which is like 13.
Yeah. And then my sign is 7 by 12. So it'll be 20 as the max. And actually, when measured, you know, just to compare, I spoke with you. I measured junctions, and they're like 19, 5, whatever it was. Then I measured Casey's, and they're over 20 feet tall. And I'm within the realms of everyone else.
How did, how did those guys, I mean, they're, they're just so long ago that that's what it was?
Casey's wasn't that long ago.
Casey's can't be, yeah, no, that's a newer sign.
I'm pretty sure Dollar General's is over 20 feet. I looked at that.
It's, it's, it's probably just part of going to zoning administrators, zoning administrators, zoning administrator, and just over.
I mean, apparently got completely overlooked by Casey's. I doubt if this code has changed in any of that time.
And no, the code hasn't changed for years, so.
Or Otsville, I'm sure that's well over 20, I think.
So it's just.
Pretty high.
That's all the same commercial C2 zone?
C2 highway commercial. Yep. So it's probably something we should take a look at, an ordinance change in the future.
Well, that's what I'm wondering, is, I mean, can we legally allow this? I think we can, as long as we change the ordinance. Or do we, can we grant a variance?
No, word of adjustment would have to grant the variance.
Because I have no problem getting in the way of this or getting out of the way of this.
I think we should go ahead and change the ordinance, because when he gets ready to sell it, it's gonna be a problem again, yeah. It's for your own, make it easy to sell someday. Oh, you just wait. 25 years from now, you'll sell it.
You'll get tired of it.
Everybody sells their apartment, right?
Right.
And it's under the, it's under the 100 square feet?
Yes.
Yeah, it's 84, actually.
Foolish.
I'm, I just don't.
And it's, it's well under the wattage. They should also actually go buy, as a, they should go buy, they should go buy lumens.
Lumens and not watts anymore.
My whole sign is 13 watts, but the max on Main Street is 30, about 300. And on the highway, you can do 500, and I'm doing 13 watts, my whole sign. So I changed all the LED.
LED, yeah.
And like I, like I said, I, um, I mean, we here know it's over 20 feet, but every person driving down the road ain't gonna know that.
Yeah, you'll be able to tell.
I mean.
16.
So I don't, I don't really have a problem, so I think, I, I'll make a motion that we approve it and change the ordinance.
Second? Second, yeah, well, John's got a second, so.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to approve it, and would you say change the ordinance?
Yeah.
Well, we have to do the work on the ordinance first. I mean, this is just to accept the.
We're gonna accept the.
The sign.
The sign is proposed.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what we're gonna do, accept the sign, okay? Do we have, uh, Travis?
Hi.
Nate?
Hi.
Stephanie?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Doug?
Hi.
Okay, now do I have this straight? Then we're going to change the ordinance?
We'll work on changing the ordinance, and we'll have the key readings.
Next meeting and then we'll have a public hearing.
Got it. Yeah, I'd wait.
Because it'll, it'll need to go to P&amp;Z. It'll be on P&amp;Z's next agenda.
Well, they would be.
Why do they have to wait?
Wait, I mean, we approved it.
We just approved it.
Yeah, so.
It's good to go.
There's no.
You can issue a permit? Okay.
She's worried about. I don't know, because the planning and zoning.
They just give recommendations.
The DOT says good, so.
They just, they, all they do is give recommendations, Stephanie.
I know, but I'm just saying, if your planning and zoning board comes back to you and says that they don't recommend that you do that for X, Y, and Z. I mean, I have a problem with the sign, and I don't, I don't really care how big or tall it is, but I'm just saying, for your protection, I personally would probably wait until the ordinance was changed. But that's just me.
Say, we pass that on, in my mind, I voted yes because it's an existing.
But that's not what the motion was.
And the neighbors are well over 20 feet. Casey's was, was that less than 10 years that they had it on? It's gonna be a little bit too.
Yeah.
We can, we can.
You might naturally be happening after the, the, the code is changed, so maybe it's all okay. I wouldn't, I wouldn't stop my.
Where is the next P&amp;Z meeting?
Um, the 16, what is it?
Thursday?
Next Thursday. Not this week, but next week.
Yeah. All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That would be illegal.
It's more than $299.
It's gotta be a super junior, Doug.
A draw.
That's right.
No cans or bottles, just draws.
Approval of removal.
Solid removal.
So this is what we do every year. Um, we actually budgeted to do it twice. We got lucky and didn't have to do it with the sewer project down there. We had enough space to take it. Um, our bid is for the 10,000, and that's normally the 120,000 gallons. Um, with the project we did, I'm gonna probably do a little more, and they said not to exceed 13,000. So that's, I just wanted to let you guys know we have to do it. That was the cheapest price we could get.
Was 10, not to exceed 13?
Not to exceed 13. Now, do we have someone come in and do that for us? Yes. And then they remove it and take it somewhere? Didn't we used to do that ourselves at one time? We had, I had it set up that, um, Browns would haul it, and a farmer would incorporate it. But with the sales of the fields out here, we lost the land we had. Oh, okay. So now this stuff's going a distance away, and that would take us a week where these guys are done in 48 hours. Okay. I just was curious, because I thought we were doing it at one time ourselves. Yeah, we were, and it was, I mean, we actually had to do it through the weekend, because that's when it worked for the farmer and for Browns. Okay. So there's a lot of, a lot of monkeying around, but like I said, we bought some of the land, and so did other people out there, so when we lost our land, we kind of lost our deal, so. Okay. The closest other farmer we have, um, Brown says that they'd want to do it more of an hourly than a truck because of the distance so long, and it's just not feasible versus what we got going on now. It would cost more? Yeah. Okay. That's fine. I'm just curious.
I'll move to approve.
Second?
I'll send first and second. Travis?
Hi.
Nate?
Hi.
Stephanie?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Doug?
Hi.
Okay. Resolution 60, 2018, approving annual appropriation for Brothers Market.
This would be what Larry was talking about earlier. We do a TIF rebate for Brothers Market, and we need to do annual appropriations, so we only have to hold that one-year amount against our debt capacity.
I'll move to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Doug?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Stephanie?
Hi.
Nate?
Hi.
Travis?
Hi.
Resolution 61, 2018, approval of code of conduct for grant funds.
The next four items are requirements that we have to have in place in order to receive the downtown rehabilitation grant, which we've already been awarded. So we just, if they look familiar, we just did these a year ago. They're exactly the same, but just the dates have been changed.
Motion to approve the code of conduct.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
We need a roll call.
Resolution.
It's a roll call, it's a resolution.
Dang. Uh, Doug?
Hi.
Wait a second, Doug.
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Stephanie?
Hi.
Nate?
Hi.
Travis?
Hi.
Resolution 62, 2018, approval of proclamation, proclamation.
Procurement policy.
Okay, whatever. Policy for grant.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Travis?
Hi.
Nate?
Hi.
Stephanie?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Doug?
Hi.
Resolution 63, 2018, approval of residential anti-deplacement and relocation assistance pad for grant fund.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve it. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Travis?
Hi.
Nate?
Hi.
Stephanie?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Doug?
Hi.
Okay, resolution 64, 2018, approval of signature authorizing for grant fund.
Who are our signatories for this?
Earl and I.
Do we have to have four, according to this? There's a CEO, signatory one, two, and three, and then a witness on the form.
I think we've only had two in the past.
I'm pretty sure you're right. I just, I've never seen it with four on there before. I thought that was kind of odd.
Yeah, I think we've only had two in the past.
Okay, if.
And a witness. If there is another one, then we'll, we'll add Doug to it.
Just curious, um, motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Excuse me. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, okay. Travis?
Hi.
Nate?
Hi.
Stephanie?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Doug?
Hi.
I would think maybe those are part of the grant, others, some of the items.
Yeah.
Okay. Is that a public hearing for budget amendment?
No.
Which one is it?
Yeah. Approving certification for the lien.
Certification of a lien for.
Of lien, yep.
Utility, unpaid utility bills.
These are some bills that Christine has been trying to collect for quite a while. They're rental properties, and the renters left without paying the bill, so then it would fall on the landlord himself. She did send certified letters to them, giving them 30 days, and they did not respond. So we have the right at this time to certify against the property tax.
Now, how old are these? I'm looking at the one for, um, it says for several years to claim the money. What made us wait so long to get to this stage if it's been several years?
Um, I am not positive when they.
I guess it's not relevant. I just. I guess it's not relevant. I just...
Well, she, she usually tries as long as she can to locate the renter and to get it from them, so we don't have to fall back on the landlord. But she's been in the process the last several months of cleaning out some of those old accounts and trying to get them closed out. So if you want me to in the future, we can, I can have her put...
No, I, I'm just curious. I see the account numbers end in oh-nine and fourteen, and I'm curious if one of these is nine years old or something.
No, uh-uh.
Okay.
The, the oh-nine would be, the account numbers are the same, the first two sets of digits. The oh-nine would be the ninth person that would live in that...
That's connected to that residence.
Connected to that residence. So as you can see, like, my account has oh-one, your account probably has maybe oh-three. You know, there's not that, been that many people in your home. But since these are rental properties, those numbers change.
Keep changing up, okay.
I'll move to approve.
Motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Doug?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
Nate?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Now, I noticed on this copy you have, you'll change the roll call vote, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And besides the amount that we're assessing, what else are we allowed to add to that for our troubles?
We usually don't. I think in the past, we've had a policy where we can add twenty-five dollars, but we, we haven't in the recent, I mean, in the last few years, we haven't done that.
I think we should consider that in the future when we give somebody thirty days to pay it and they ignore it or...
Oh, these guys, I know, have had it probably a couple of years.
Yeah.
Okay. Resolution sixty-six two oh eighteen, approving certification of lien for unpaid utility bills.
And this will be the same as the last one, just a different residence.
Motion to approve.
Motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Doug?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
Nate?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Okay, we did the next one already. Set a public hearing for budget amendment.
Um, I've, since we've had so many things happen, good things happen in the last few months, like the grants that we've received, they weren't, we didn't know at the time we did the budget if we were gonna get those or not. So I need to change the budget and amend it so we can prepare. The revenues coming in would be the housing grant that we just were awarded, the SRF loan for six hundred and fifty-eight thousand, the grant that we received from CDG for five hundred thousand for the sewer project, and the bond that we will be receiving for the hundred and sixty thousand. I'm only gonna be recertifying or amending for eighty thousand on that, fifty thousand on that, because the other money for the fire truck was, was budgeted in this year's budget, the ninety-five thousand. Also, I have in here the U-Step grant that we'll be receiving to do the project, alley project at Whitey's. So as you can see, all these amendments that we're gonna do are good things. So then the expenditures that would correspond with those revenues, the housing grant payments to the contractors who do the, the housing projects, the money that we're gonna be paying to, that we just approved some of that tonight, the new dump truck, and we've already budgeted this budget to spend forty thousand for a new dump truck. So if we do not get that DERA grant, then the money that we are getting with this new bond, we'll use that. If not, the way I set the bond up, as Larry explained to you guys, we can call the bond in thirty, in thirty days' notice, so we can take that money and just pay it right back on the bond if we don't have to use it. Otherwise, usually the bonds, usually you can't call them before five years or ten years. So that's, I did that with the swimming, the splash pad bond also. So once we got donations, we could just go ahead and pay on that.
So we have to set a public hearing for this? Is that what it's for, or no?
Yes. Mm-hmm. So I would like to set the public hearing for the next council meeting, which would be September twenty-fourth. And this also includes the expenditures for the new Public Works employ. So that's why, it would normally be a wash, revenues, expenditures for those grants, but then you're gonna see, because of the dump truck and because of the new Public Works employ, that's why it's showing a negative.
So are you making a motion?
I'll move to set the public hearing for September twenty-fourth.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
New business.
The only new business I wanted to discuss with you is, I was right when I talked to you about the reduction in water and sewer bills that Mount Vernon is working on. They are in the process of doing an ordinance. I haven't talked to Mark yet to see if it can just be done by policy or if he would recommend us doing an ordinance change like Mount Vernon is. But I did include their copy. They passed the second reading at their last council meeting. So I did include a copy in your packet for you guys to review. So get back to me if you have any questions or anything that you would like me to research further, and then at the next meeting we can, well, it'll be, I have to put it on the council, I mean, the zoning, P&amp;Z agenda. Well, maybe this one, no, this one shouldn't have to. But anyway, we'll move forward on that if this is what you guys want to, to do. And this, the ordinance that Mount Vernon is doing is just for mechanical problems only. So they're specifying in there that it has to be some type of mechanical problem, like the hot water heater went out, or a washing machine broke and caused water to go all over the place. So it does spell that out in their ordinance. So please review that, get back to me, and then we can get going on that.
This is twenty-five percent off, if I remember right.
Um, let's see. They only allow it if their usage exceeds a hundred and fifty percent of their custom average bill, and then it would be reduced by twenty-five percent.
And that's off water and sewer?
They're doing water and sewer, yes.
And it has nothing to do with the outside faucet leaking that doesn't go down the sewer?
No, it would not cover that. It would have to be something mechanical, some mechanical breakdown in some way. So...
But we can make additions or...
Yep, we can change it any way we want. This is just what they're doing. So that's all I have for new business.
Any correspondence?
Nope.
Okay. City engineer?
Quick update on some things I've been working on. As I mentioned earlier, the sewer we have brought to us several weeks forward, Milwaukee State's Park Sticks, we have construction drawings submitted, the water sewer permits have been approved, so they should be starting soon on that. Site plan review for business, that's one of the located out in Milwaukee State's third-digit lot two, that's just west of Brothers Market. So that should be coming before council pretty soon. We met with them last week, set down a list of things for them to revise. They're pretty close. Travis and I met with the contractor last week, the wastewater plant went through the U.D. startup, it's done pretty well, gave us a punch list, they're very keen on taking care of the make-over all that shooting done. Just a very minor, I changed it previously for about ten dollars, but the project stayed pretty close to budget, went well. And then Whitey's, we submitted plans for parking lot visions, and we're changing manual parking, and the direction that people go into the parking lot, that's been submitted to the U.D. for review, so it's, they give us any comments or...
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Public Works Director report?
Just to give everybody a heads up, they're doing more of the asphalt patching from the sewer project, so there's some roads that are blocked. County's done a pretty good job of letting the fire department and police know, so they should be patched tomorrow morning, which means the following day we can take the barricades out. It's all on temperature base. I mean, if it's nice and cool like it has been, we might be able to do it later on in the afternoon. Other than that, we've started putting the radio reads on again. We had a couple, couple free hours Friday and some today, so we got close to another fifty of those put on.
How many we have left, then?
Uh, I knew you were gonna ask that.
If you knew, you would've been prepared.
Yeah.
Okay.
Fair enough. Well, because we keep putting them in every time we have a meter fail.
Right.
So in the first, I mean, right now we've got eight hundred and like forty-nine in the system that need them, and we should be close to, with what's in the shop that we got left to put on, we gotta be close to that six hundred range left.
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 Yeah. But see, we, we purchased five hundred and how many of those?
I knew you were gonna ask that.
Yeah.
I mean, we budgeted some last year for them, and we budgeted some this year for them, right?
We did. But we actually, we, on govdeals.com, we purchased five hundred of them for like fifteen hundred bucks, thinking that would be a good start. Well, we couldn't get the frequency released, so we've been warranting those out. So what we paid fifteen hundred bucks for, we've already got close to six thousand dollars worth of return out of that fifteen hundred bucks.
Okay.
So it's gonna be a little slower because we're trying to warranty it out, so we can only send fifty at a time.
Right.
But it's gonna save us money in the long run.
Cool. All right. So we're almost, so we'll be done next fiscal year, or no?
I think we budgeted for four years.
We did, yeah, we did for four years. The goal is if we can get all these warranted out, we should only have to do half as much next year.
Okay.
And be perfect, two hundred.
I did see a police department here, but he is left.
Yeah, Ricky came, talked to me this afternoon. He wasn't gonna be able to be here tonight, but he did give the report, and I gave you guys all a copy there. It should be in front of you where your computer is.
Okay. Anybody have any questions about that? Good reading. Okay. Fire chief, no fire chief?
Brandon is not here either. He is watching his son play soccer tonight. So he wanted to let, me to let you guys know that the breakfast went very well. They had over eleven hundred people come through and eat, and he wanted to thank all the fire department and all the residents that helped, and for everybody for supporting them.
City administrator report?
I have a couple things. We will be starting the rental inspections in October. I did send out letters today. We are going to be doing about eight to ten each month and just continue until we get through the whole process. So those first eight to ten letters did go out today, letting them know that the Lynn County will be contacting them to set up an appointment for that inspection. So we're moving along on those.
Did we budget for that already? Because we gotta pay the county for that, right?
We do, but there, there will be a charge. We did not charge them for registration or anything. We waived all those fees. There will be a charge for the inspection, and that fee will be passed on to the landlord.
Passed on, okay.
Yep, we're not gonna, there'll be no...
No cost to the city?
No, and there will be no, we will not charge the resident any more than what Lynn County charges us to get it started. We did put the ad in the Sun and the Gazette and surrounding towns that the Sun supports for the Public Works Director. It went out last weekend and this last week, so we're starting to get in applications. So Travis and I are gonna review those probably at the end of this week and...
Employ.
Huh?
Employ.
What did I say?
Director.
Director.
Unless you know something. Are we looking for a better one?
Yeah. If you know something I don't know, you, you wanna let me know?
I knew you were gonna.
Yeah.
Anyway, for Public Works Employee, and then we'll get with Doug and John to move forward on that. In case you haven't driven by Gillette Line yet, the poles are going up from ITC. They moved the first one in, and it's laying in the grass there. It's a monster. So...
The ugliest thing I've ever seen in my whole life.
I felt the same way.
I thought they were supposed to be the engineer.
And they said you were gonna make them look pretty.
Yeah.
Yeah, it ain't happened.
These are just wooden poles.
No, they're not. They're metal.
They're metal. They're, yeah, they're metal.
Oh, I'm thinking the ones on thirty look like...
The wooden ones actually look, I think, look better.
Better than the metal ones do.
But it, it is what it is, and we'll make the best of it. We, they are putting the banner brackets on there for us. The problem that we're going to have is finding a banner that's not gonna look like an ant on a mountain.
Big old pole, I know.
Yeah. So I'm working on that. Brett Ricker, I've talked with him, and he's got some ideas. We're meeting tomorrow. We, we've went through some cities where they have, I don't know if you guys seen them, but they're kinda like that. They're a piece of metal that has the imprint cut out, which we thought would probably withstand the weather and the wind. It's something we're gonna put up there for a more permanent basis. I have no idea on the cost yet, but we're just tossing around different ideas. So once we get some designs together, we'll be bringing that back to you guys. It's just finding something big enough to put out there that's not gonna look ridiculous.
I bet when you go to, where are you going, Sioux City?
Council Bluffs.
Council Bluffs. I remember seeing those, the display and everything.
Yeah, that's what Brett told me. He saw them in some town. They had them in their entryway. So I tried to look online at a bunch of them, and they, they didn't really, they had some that were like a farm scene, some that were more for like nature trails and that kind of thing. But, so we'll get some ideas. There's no reason for us to hurry until we find what we really want. The only other thing I want to discuss with you is I will be gone Wednesday, Thursday, and part of Friday for the Iowa League of Cities Conference in Council Bluffs, where we're gonna be getting our, our star award for our solar panels. So I just wanted to update you guys a little bit. I did some research on just for the canopy out here at front. And since July and August of sixteen and seventeen, our bill here at the City Hall ran anywhere from twelve hundred to thirteen hundred, and, well, one time fourteen hundred. Then the next year, they ran nine hundred to eleven hundred. This year, they're running about seven hundred to eight hundred total. But the good thing about this is the part that we're paying Alliant right now, the last two months, is like fifty dollars. So the rest of the money is, is being paid to Red Lion. So even though it's, the total per month has dropped, you know, not as drastically as I would hope or I think, but it's dropped quite a bit. But the fact that only fifty dollars of our bill is being used from Alliant, the rest of it is being supplied from our solar panels.
Yeah, I mean, it's like eighty percent of it is super green power. That's awesome.
Yeah. So Red Lion was really impressed that he thinks we're, we're going to be down probably here in the near future to a zero as far as this canopy is. And, well, there's things on the roof, too, that are providing for this building. And I haven't had time to do research on the other projects, but...
Did we ever put online what the savings were from this solar project on our website or anything?
Unfortunately, the things that were promised by our installer never came through. And when I, it wasn't Red Lion, it was the installer that promised us that he could, he could do that, and...
I mean, even, we could still put in, you know, our monthly bill was, we were paying Alliant fourteen hundred or whatever.
Yeah, we can still do something.
We can put a summary, just...
Now, we're, now we're paying them fifty and, you know, seventy-five.
And I would like to, before I do that, I would like to do the same.
Yeah.
So you said we paid eighteen or eight hundred, but of that, only fifty of it went to Alliant?
Yes.